I'd entertain.
Bob, do you want me to take a walk down there and make sure he turns it on?
What do you want me to do?
Take a walk down there?
Yeah, I will.
I can't, no, I'll do it, just don't start the meeting without me.
Okay.
She said she's faster than, I don't know, racer.
Zach.
Okay, we're just waiting for Michelle to come back and I'll entertain a motion.
Hasn't, she was here and now she's gone.
To, um.
That's Denny, but our student, Mara, who is our student advisory report, was there earlier, and now she's disappeared.
We're just waiting on Michelle?
Maybe she'll find Mara while she's at it. Mara got her driver's license. Mara Burt, that's our student.
I don't see her.
She was here earlier. She'll probably show back up, maybe Michelle knows where she is. Michelle, did you see Mara anywhere? Mara Burt, our student?
I did not see her.
Oh, because she was here a few minutes ago.
Okay, you good, Michelle?
Yep.
I'd entertain a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, we're out of executive session. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of October 18, 2017. We have some very special people here this evening, and we're very, very proud of them. So we're going to take you out of order and do it first. And that way you won't have to sit here all night, not that our meetings aren't exciting.
Yeah, because they are.
Because they are.
Yeah.
But, we're going to take you out of order, so. Ruth, it's actually, it's the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Recognition Awards.
That's right.
Which are very, very important and very big, and as I said a minute ago, we are very proud of these students. Very proud, so, if we can.
Sure. And annually, the MASs, or the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, recognizes the top two students in the graduating class of the high school. So this year, we are very excited to welcome this evening Reagan Hayes and Caitlin Morrison. And we have certificates, so come around and give them. You also have, in your packets, you have resumes of these two young women, and it's very impressive what they've accomplished in their lives in a very short period of time. We'll come around.
This is always a little... We do it.
We have, in the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee, honored to present Caitlin Morrison, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Mass Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded a certificate of academic excellence, and witness in the seal of the association with the signature of the superintendent of schools.
I didn't get these.
There could be a timeout.
This is really official if I'm signing it.
Exactly, we're witnesses.
Oh, is there a real certificate?
I have a two-year-old daughter, and she's been before, I mean, if you don't eat yourself a cup of, timeout. I want two years. Thought that was not deserved. Thank you so much, we're so very proud of you.
I mean Reagan Wrightman, on a suppress.
Reagan, the same thing, we are so very proud of you. So having been qualified under the standards prescribed by the Mass Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded a certificate of academic excellence, and witness in the seal of the association with the signature of the superintendent of schools. Reagan, thank you, congratulations. Anytime students get an award in the Mass Superintendent's Association, it's a big deal. As I've been for some of the things that have happened about Caitlin, superintendents, you know, it's a wild one, they can be great association, and they can all achieve academic excellence, so yeah, we're very proud of you. Great job.
And before you go, why don't you tell us what you're looking at in terms of next year, and maybe what you think you're thinking about next year, I think, I mean, that's important. Caitlin, why don't you tell us?
Okay, so I'm looking into majoring in physics at a number of colleges. My top school at the moment is Massachusetts Institute of Technology in Boston. I'm praying that I get in, hopefully. This year, I am taking advanced placement, environmental science, advanced placement, literature and composition, advanced placement calculus, advanced placement physics, and...
What are you doing, your spirit?
If you have any.
Hi, um...
You've been involved in drama.
I am, I'm a state member of Drama Club. I also sing in my local church's teen worship band, so that's nice and fun. And I also participate in our student environmental, student environmental awareness up here. Thank you.
How about you, Reagan?
Next year is Harvard, I'm looking at a lot of different schools. I want to go to marketing, hopefully. And I'm taking AP Calculus, AP Spanish, AP Psychology, and AP Literature.
And how about you and your spirit, Caitlin?
Uh, I do dance, and I am an NHS person.
And Reagan also was our Project 351 student, way back when she was in eighth grade, but you've stayed involved.
Yeah.
And then a number of things with them, and we did have a presentation here last year, you remember? And she was one of our Project 351 people as well, so congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
And my great team.
I hope that we all know, this is a graduation that also goes to the parents, because they did not make it to the top.
Thank you.
The families, grandparents, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
That's very nice. Yes. Thank you. You can stay. Okay.
Yeah, there, Mara's here, there she is.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 13, 2017.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? To abstain.
Hold on. So one, two, three, and how many, yeah, one, two, three, so one, two, three.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Can I see who approved, because I think the abstains...
Approved.
The abstains are no votes.
Abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Four to four?
Oh, no, I'm not abstaining, sorry.
Okay.
I thought we went back to the beginning.
Let's go back to the September 13, 2017, 2017 minutes of the school committee. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the September 13, 2017 minutes? Opposed? Abstaining?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes of October 5, 2017. Special school committee, district meeting. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining?
Michelle.
Now, student advisor, we have a student advisor, Mara Burt. Mara?
So at the high school, tonight from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., there was a math information event for parents, members of the Whitman Hansen High School Math Department. Hosted an informational event for all high school parents to demonstrate the exciting instructional strategies being utilized in their classrooms, to promote student engagement, collaboration, and deep understanding. The district's K-12 math curriculum director, Brian Seelig, was also present to provide the rationale for the shift in instructional approach, and to answer any questions that parents have. October 24th at 7:00 p.m., the fall concert will be held here at the John F. McQuann Performing Arts Center. October 28th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the high school will host its annual truck or treat to benefit Panther Education Trust. September 30th was also the eighth annual Miles for Meals 5K. This event, sponsored by the National Honor Society and the Student Council, raises funds to support the Hanson and Whitman Food Pantries. October 1st was the Dollars for Scholars Skate fundraiser. Women in Hanson Dollars for Scholars announced plans for a skating fundraiser at the Carousel Family Center, Skate Center, where all proceeds benefited Dollars for Scholars. October 11th was PSAT testing. October 11th was also the Community Forum for K-12 Education. Today, the successful cross-country meet was also held at the Whitman Middle. Parent conferences are coming up for middle and elementary schools during the second week in November. Picture days went pretty well. In Hanson Middle, September 30th was the Dollars for Scholars Electronic Recycling Day, where Women in Hanson Dollars for Scholars began their fundraising season with a Fall Electronic Recycling Day at the McQuann School. Residents and non-residents could dispose of their unwanted electrical items, which they may not be able to do away with conventional trash methods, and if he went to support the scholarship programs.
Anyone have any questions for Mara? Great job, thank you very much.
Mara, before she goes, she needs to tell you something good that happened to her.
Oh, I got my license.
Can you show them? Yeah, it's really good.
Hold up.
She's got her driver's license.
Good job.
It was good, right?
Okay, as usual, to just be a little bit more prudent in people's time, we're going to jump right down to new business. We have Dr. Denny Hawley here from Counseling Service of South Bay.
I'll explain it.
Okay, go ahead, Ruth.
Denny, why don't you come forward to the podium, so we can explain why Denny is here. Denny is employed by North River Collaborative, and she was the lead in the Behavioral Health Initiative grant that we were part of for the last three years. Since that time, she's now working with North River, and we have the opportunity to be able to use her services one day a week. And one of the concerns that we have are the social-emotional issues that we deal with in all of our schools, we've talked about it in a lot of our different school committee meetings, and the services that we feel that our students need. And one of the things Denny and I have been talking about, and Kyle's been a big part of that conversation as well, is is there a way to bring services to students? And oftentimes, when students do have mental health issues or social-emotional challenges, trying to get an appointment, getting the services that they need can take months at a time. So this summer, we started talking about what would it be like if you actually had the services in the school district and available to students? And Denny, in working with Kyle and with me, did some exploration to see just what might be available. So I asked her to come this evening, because she's very good at explaining what this is and what the benefits might be to Whitman Hansen students. If this is something that the committee believes would be of benefit to the district, we would ask you to give a vote of confidence to move forward with this. So, Denny, maybe if you could give the committee just a little overview as to where our thinking was and what we're looking at.
Sure, so, what happens at a number of schools who have partnered with community clinical services, I use partner very loosely, it's not an official partnership, but it's the recognition that some of our students really need more intensive opportunities to meet with licensed counselors. And they're being put on wait lists for very long periods of time. It's often difficult for parents to get students to appointments, because they're with us, frankly, most of the time. So what a number of schools have done is they've made these relationships with clinics to provide an onsite therapist, comes to the school, the students are identified by the school, or parents can also identify them. Then we step out, and the clinic works with the family to do an intake, go over what it is that they need to work on, and then we provide them with space, and they come in once a week and meet with the student. I've seen this work really well in other schools. The key is having a clinician who's willing to be part of the team, and can therefore help us with developing ways to help students to manage their social-emotional issues. Sometimes it's a full-year involvement, sometimes it's something short. A student may be going through an intense anxiety or grief issues, that someone will come in, meet with them, and assist us in helping get them back on track in terms of working with the school. So I spoke to South Bay, because they worked with another school that I saw, and I was impressed with how well it worked. What was great about this clinician was, he met weekly with the school staff, so that people were in the loop, not regarding the issues the student was discussing, because that was all confidential, but around, if we were seeing this student struggling at school, we could mention it to him, and he would bring it up and help the student. The other thing that is really great is sometimes those of us in the school, we worry about kids, and we wonder, what's going to go happen on vacations, and what happens on weekends? And the nice thing about this model is this clinician is available to not only the student, but to families, and available on weekends and vacation weeks, so the student doesn't miss out on this during that time. I've spoken, as I said, I spoke with South Bay, we went over different models, different possibilities, they would assign one person who would form a relationship with that school. We're proposing to pilot this at McQuann and Indian Head as a first step to see how it works and get a feel for it. And if we, if it works well, then we'll expand it. We've talked to all the principals about this possibility, and we'll see how it fits in at the different levels. Another nice piece, I just want to say, is a by-the-way that happened at this other school, was this clinician stayed with the kids. So we brought him in at the elementary level, and he stayed with them as they moved into middle and high school, and so the families weren't having to switch people all the time, which is, again, is a big issue that happens, and there was a lot of consistency for the children. So this is what we're proposing to try here with Whitman Hansen, and as I said, it's, it has worked successfully across the districts.
So if you have any questions for Denny, we can be happy to answer them.
Fred?
As the clinician follows the student to the next grade level, to the next school, et cetera, is there a secondary clinician that comes in so that the caseload doesn't get so overbearing?
Well, it depends, obviously, they can only take a certain number, right? They reach a max. The example I have, he didn't. There were a couple of times we had to wait a little longer, but kids don't stay in counseling forever, so as they moved through, we were able to fit in other kids at the elementary level. But for kids who, and another nice thing was, he could do the whole family in some cases, if needed. So it didn't hit that. At one point, we did have to get another counselor, because we had so many students that needed this service, and again, it was one person who was assigned to the school and formed those relationships.
Bob?
Could you run through the identification process on how someone is chosen for that particular counseling?
I'm sorry, say that again?
How is, how is a student identified to need this additional counseling?
There's a couple ways, ways that we currently use now. If we have a student that we feel is, that what we're trying isn't working in the school, that their anxiety is overwhelming them, they're not able to function in the school, we will recommend to the parent that they also get this student an outside counselor. All this does is, what we can now do is offer to the parent, we have someone who comes in from South Bay, if you would like, I will give him or her your name, and he or she will call you, and it goes there.
This is a K-12, well, pre-K-12, what's the...
Well, we're looking at the pilot to be Indian Head and McQuann, but the possibility is K-12, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
I guess one of my concerns, Ruth, is probably a question more to you. How will we know, if we're going to vote on accepting this to come forward, will you be giving us a report on how it's working as we move through the steps? It sounds like it's a pilot program.
Sure, we can absolutely do that.
You know, will they, will South Bay be coming, would Dr. Denny be coming? I kind of like to know how the committee's going to know how we're progressing.
So what we talked about with the principals was, we would try this until after the holidays, and then come back together and just let them know what's working and what's not, if there are any concerns. So we can give you the exact same information about how it's progressing. Each level in each school building will have different needs moving forward, but this pilot, one of the key issues is, do they take enough of the insurances that our students have? That's the key. The only one that they said they would have some struggle with may be Blue Cross Blue Shield, in terms of an increased waiting time, but they, otherwise, they carry a variety of insurances. But that's sort of something we want to really watch and see, because we don't really know all the insurances.
I think it's important that there's no cost to the school system in doing this. These services are paid by the family's insurance.
Yes.
Basically, what this is, is it's an opportunity for families to get counseling at school, instead of having to work, maybe take the student somewhere else, wait two or three months for an appointment. Services are right there, they're done during the school day. So it's, and it's just another way of trying to support families, but there's really no cost, and as Denny explained when she met with the principals, they're, these people are very portable. They don't have, we don't have to have a designated South Bay office at McQuann or Indian Head. They'll work wherever there's a space to be able to do that. So, and there's a ton of flexibility here. They, of course, take mass health, so that's, you know, for families who have mass health, but then, as Denny said, other insurances, you have to work it out, but it's no cost to the school system. So we're, be happy to come back and report out, and I know that Denny's had some conversations with Dr. Wilcox to see how this could work at McQuann and Indian Head.
Ellen?
My question is, how does it work? Do the kids come out of class to meet? Or is it before school, after school?
They, it depends on the school. Elementary's a little more flexible than the other levels. The way South Bay presents it, they try to work around lunch, recess, that kind of thing. Any kind of intense issues that need to be addressed are done at home, so they would be doing those at a home appointment. So they try to keep it really focused on what is the strategies needed for the student to be able to manage themselves in order to be in school.
Fred?
As far as being able to have parents aware that the services are available, how do you accomplish that?
It would be, if we were referring a student, like we do now, because of concerns, we would be calling the parent and saying, right now, we've offered this, this, and this to the student, but we think, we recommend that you refer this student to a therapist. What I'm going to tell you is, in addition, you can go anywhere, and I can give you names to go to, or we have someone who comes in, if you'd be interested in working with that person, I'll send her your way.
And perhaps, let me clarify, you had mentioned that the parents could request services.
Absolutely.
And I feel it's important, because there's a maze of craziness out there.
Right.
Where do I go, who do I call, what number do I call? And so how do we let the parents know that the service is available to them if they want to request it?
Well, we let them know, and we inform the parents, usually...
Is there a mass email blast that goes to every parent?
I don't think so, because I think it's, this is a matter of, we pretty much have identified a number of students, Dr. Wilcox has already identified a number of students that she would consider recommending this to. So I think we start with them, and then proceed after that. As I said, it's come up, when I've done this in the past, if a situation comes up, and I'm asking a parent to consider referring their child to therapy, I always say, also, we have this person. So it comes up in that conversation. I don't think we want to, I don't think we want to advertise that, you know, we've now become a clinic. I think we want to keep it very focused to, what are, what are the issues that are impacting this student's functioning in the school, and who would I refer the student to? Does that make sense? Is that clear?
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I sort of look at it as a benefit, that if a parent feels that there might be a need through something happening in the home life, to be able to know that they would have the service available to them, and when you stated that the parents could ask for the service.
Yes.
I thought that was a very good thing, but then again, you ask, how do they know it's available? Because you look at even, you hurt your knee, and you need to go to an orthopedic doctor.
We can talk...
My route of paperwork and going to your primary care, and then going to this one and that one before you even get there. You know, and I'm, I would have to think that it's just as difficult to navigate the waters.
It's a good point. I think usually what happens, in my experience, is parents call us anyway to ask for help with that process. Because usually what we've been doing is just referring them to a list of counselors that we know in the community that are effective with this particular age student. But as we move forward, that's a good point. If it's really working, we may want to add it to some of our literature, that this is an option. So, yeah, I'll certainly make note of that, and we'll see where we go with that, that's a good point. Thank you.
Kyle?
Yeah, just to add on to that point, I think it's a good one. We do some of this work right now, especially for the special ed population, and I think that's what you were referring to earlier, as the team gets together with parents and talk about some of the needs that are out there, we talk about services both in school and out of school in those conversations. So the special ed population is ongoing with this. Usually when we say, you know, you may want to seek some support outside, we're saying, get on that waiting list for six months, and now we're saying, here's a service right here. I'd also say, for regular ed students, that every school has an intervention process. So typically, if something's going on outside the district, the school department knows about it, the school knows about it, so we're hearing those things, and that's where the list is getting formed for all students.
I mean, within our own district, in elementary school, last year, we had a student cutting themselves, unknown by the school itself. Kid wore long sleeves and hit it pretty well, and the parents weren't really sure where to turn. And, you know, so I know of this particular situation, and they went privately, and it was my route trying to navigate water, so to speak. You know, so that's why I think it would be a very, very big help if parents knew that they did have a resource available to them.
Dan?
Back to like where Ali was asking, a student needs services during the school day. Is it like a certain timeframe they're being pulled out of a class? I'm only saying from seeing past experiences. If a student's not having a good day or month in math and needs the math, and they're coming down, that's the only time slot is during their math period? Are they being pulled out of the classroom where they should be in the classroom?
I think every effort is made to not take them out of a major academic area, but many times, students who are dealing with these social-emotional issues aren't particularly available for learning in the first place. And the whole point is to get them back to that place. So clearly, you don't want students missing a major academic piece and becoming more anxious because they're missing it, you'd be undoing what you're trying to do. But clearly, trying to avoid that, and I think also working with our staff, so they understand that if a student is out for this, they shouldn't be penalized for that.
No, I just mean, maybe, you know, because I've seen in the past, missed, missed, and it's like, well, that's their weak spot right now, why are they missing that?
I would think that wouldn't, you know, they'd try to work around that.
So let me just say, from South Bay, they say, sessions aim to be held during non-academic periods, lunch, recess, specials, et cetera, whenever possible. And in this case, because it's a partnership with us, the team at the school determines when this is all going to work. So it becomes a collaboration, if this person's going to be there on Mondays, then we work around that schedule, because I hear exactly what you're saying, we don't want them to get further behind in something that is also causing them anxiety, so. So.
Ellen?
Just in addition to that, are they, when they're still in school, it doesn't affect their attendance and anything, does it?
Oh, it shouldn't.
No?
Yeah.
And then just one other follow-up question. If a child in elementary school is missing, say lunch to go to this, are we making sure that they're still getting fed?
I would assume so.
Yeah, we do groups a lot during lunch. They're called lunch boxes. So in the elementary school and kids get fed and have, yes, we make sure they get all that, yeah.
I think what Kyle was referring to and maybe I can bring it in a little different terms. When a student comes to school in this district, the, the teacher, the aides, they know if a student is off or on. We sort of have this kind of going on anyway. The professionals that work in our district can tell the student what's going on, usually. And it's not just mental health issues, there are other issues that go along with student participation that is identifiable by the professionals we have in our building. And it moves forward and it might end up in Mr. Simon Act's jurisdiction of, you know, where it's going to go and then he can contact. So I think there's, there's quite a bit of underlayment right now of discussion about what goes on with students before South Bay came forward. I see this as a service to provide better service to district students.
And hopefully eliminate a major waiting list for many of our students is the goal.
It's getting help when they need it.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, so the vote would be to determine whether Whitman-Hanson will collaborate with South Bay. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
That would read, will we collaborate with South Bay?
So moved.
Hayden, second. Any further discussion? Dan?
One thing, this is going to be like a little pilot till like January-ish.
We'll, we'll start with McQuan and Indian Head. Well, then we can come back, report out to you in January. I can do it when I do my mid-year goals and we'll see how it's going, how many people are using the services. And as I said, Denny's working with us one day a week, so we're fortunate to have her with us this year to help us make sure these things go the way they're supposed to.
Good thanks.
Excellent. Anyone else? Having a motion, a second, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Denny.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, back to Ruth's report.
Okay, since I am now on the board of North River Collaborative, in your packet you have the North River Collaborative Quarterly Report, in which they've, which you got when you received your packet on Friday, and we'll be looking for a motion to approve the North River Collaborative Quarterly Report.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? This is approving the North River Collaborative Quarterly Report in October of 2017. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And as you see in the report, it does take each one of the programs, goes through them, through it and describes it. I did have a meeting there the 6th of October with the new director is Steve Donovan. We have of course a different situation now that we're the board, so we'll be, our votes will mean a little differently than they did before and I'll be coming back with various things for you. They have noticed a decline in their enrollment of their programs. That's a concern for them and we spend a lot of time talking about that and what kind of programming they should have available. Kyle also will be attending meetings at North River and Rosamund Dorance will be attending the ones for professional scholarship. Next thing is the budget report. I'll turn it to Christine.
This should be on, in front of you, it wasn't in your packet.
Yes.
The single page, we'll start with the revenue. So if you look at the first column, it's what we anticipate receiving for revenue. The second would be if there was any transfers or adjustments, which as of today, there is not. So the third column shows you the revised budget.
Never.
The third, the fourth column shows you year-to-date expenditure, which that's the actual money that we have received. And the available budget is what we anticipate receiving before, by the end of the year, by June 30. So if you look at the Hanson-Whitman operating assessment and the non-mandated busing, you can see that we've received one payment because we get four payments. Well, we anticipate another payment in November, then again in February, and then again in You can see with the capital, which is on the high school here, that they've paid both of those in full for the high school and as well as the technology, the Hanson. And if you recall, two years ago, they just voted to borrow the money for the virtualization update. Chapter 70, we received 25%. We've, that's four months. Our charter school reimbursement, as I reported out last time, we are now getting that monthly, whereas last year it was quarterly. The chapter 71 transportation, no change to that. We'll receive our first payment in January and our second payment in June. The homeless transportation reimbursement actually came in at the very beginning of July, but that was based on FY '16 homeless transportation. It was just over 30% reimbursement. Interest income, as you can see, is, we've already reached 66%, but this is only three months' worth of interest. We anticipated, David Leary anticipated $30,000 in interest. We've already received close to $20,000 in interest. He's going to actually report out to you in December at the December meeting. And then you see the circuit breaker, which I have not made the transfer yet, and the unreserved surplus, which is E and D, which you voted last year, $750,000 to balance this year's budget, which I, you typically make those transfers late in the year.
How do we make out on the million six that we owe the state in November, the end of November for GIC?
Oh, we, I haven't, David's in tomorrow.
Okay.
So I need to talk to him tomorrow. Those checks haven't been released anyways, but that's on my radar to talk to him tomorrow about it. Then the next packet is all the year-to-date expenditures. So again, you have the original appropriation that you voted bottom line budget. The first column, any transfers in or adjustments, which we have not had any yet. I anticipate having transfers probably at the next meeting, if not in December. So if there was, then the third, the third column would be the revised budget. The year-to-date expenditures is the actual monies that have actually gone out the door. The next column is the encumbrances, which shows goods or services that have been ordered and, and the money's in reserve until we receive the product or service and then we pay it. And the last column shows you the available budget. Thereby, school, so you have Indian Head, McQuan, Conley, Duval, Whitman Middle School, Hanson Middle School, the high school, and then we have district-wide. So if you want to turn to page seven, about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see that there's a count called District-Wide Tuition Other Schools. This is for recovery high schools that Kyle can speak better to it, but I, we currently have two students in, in these recovery high schools. So if they were our students and they reach out and get enrolled in these recovery high schools, we pay, we are liable to pay tuition. Any questions?
Is that, does that work the same as such a school choice as by, it was at the end of October? If they're in the district at that point, then we have to pay?
Right, we only charge for the amount of time that they're actually in the recovery high school.
Okay, so if it's four months, it's only four months.
If it's four months, we'll give bill for four months. If it's one month, they're six months.
We're not required to pay transportation for the recovery high school.
That's right. Thanks. Then if you go to page nine, I just wanted to bring to your attention about halfway down the page, special education tuition to other schools. We're actually over budget by about, just over $123,000. Kyle can speak to that if you would.
Sure. I'll be not too specific so we don't identify children, but we did have some move-ins since the beginning of the year that we're not budgeted for, that accumulates the most of the money. We are, to your question, we are responsible for any student who goes to Collaborative right away. And then if it's a private placement outside of that, October 1st date and there's an April date, that takes us to the next year. So these are ones that were not budgeted last year, were not expected, move into the district.
Is that one student, two students?
That's two, I believe, right there.
But like on the flip side, I mean, it's so volatile that that could, if a student leaves the district, it could go the other way, so.
And it's probably worth noting, we've had conversations about tuitioning in and other ways to try to make sure we're doing everything we can to support that budget line. Because I think I spoke to the committee before about, you know, the volatile duty of special ed budget and that some, some of these exact things, we don't know that are coming, that we have to make sure we're tight everywhere else to make sure that we're doing what we can. And when we start speaking about programming and opportunities to support kids at schools, that really allows us to keep kids in the district as much as possible.
So on the same page, three-quarters of the way down, again, we have the homeless transportation, McKinny-Vento. I just wanted to bring to your attention that, you know, it's October and we've already spent over $2,800, but we have encumbered $33,000. So our available budget right now is just over $8,600. But that could also change. We just wanted to have that money reserved for the homeless children right now that we are being, that are being transported to their, their schools here in Whitman or Hanson.
Any questions for Christine? Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
And the last thing in my report is an update on the closing of McQuan. Continue to be working diligently on that. A lot of time and energy has gone into what it's going to take to move the preschool to the high school here. Ernie has been working with Kyle and Christine to look at what the configuration of rooms is going to be to ensure the safety and security of the students in the program. And we're beginning to get some pieces worked out on that. Christine, maybe you can talk a bit about what we're looking at in terms of, of the move to the preschool with the budget.
Okay, so we talked, we spoke about this a little bit at our facilities meeting. So we're looking at relocating that preschool here to the high school. So we need to reconfigure some of the classrooms down at this end over here. So we're hoping to get started here sometime in December, so at, January 22nd, when the semester breaks, we'll be able to reconfigure and move some of the, some of the teachers into other classrooms. So then we'll have time to, the goal would be to have the preschool completely done by June. So then we can move forward with the, with the other projects that come along with the transition, the transition of closing McQuan. And some of the costs that we're looking at right now that we, that we've acquired is the, having an outdoor entrance door down here to the right. So it's just for the preschool in and out, so they're not coming in the front door here, that they have their own entrance and their own exit, so for drop-off and pickup. So you're looking at just over $12,000 for that door. And we're also talked, we talked about the interior doors between each room. So when you're in room 112, you could have a door that opens up into room 114 and then you have another door that opens up into room 116, which is, we got an estimate of $10,000. We also talked about having to, there's three rooms in the back that we're going to relocate. So we're going to have to move, move all of those computer labs to another rooms in the high school. So we're going to have to take up the carpet, we're going to have to disconnect all the wires that are underneath and then put VCT tile down. So that's just over $11,000 for that. So the other thing that we're waiting on for a quote is for the LED lights, like we've worked with Chris Collins before with other energy efficient savings. And we're waiting to get a quote on if, what it would cost to put LED lights in those pre-K rooms.
So I don't know, Kyle, you want to add anything to that in terms of the preschool?
Yeah, I can add a little bit to that. That's, that's the timeline. I would add that the principals have been very helpful in process, walking it with Jeff up here and Beth over at McQuan to making sure that we're not forgetting anything. As you know, I had the opportunity to move preschool into high school before another district, so I stumbled already, so I'm hoping not to stumble too much here. But making sure that it's a welcoming place for kids, it's a safe place. Christine talks about the interior doors, that's in the classroom, less access to the hallways. If we don't need to put three and four-year-olds in the hallways, some opportunities down where, at the end of the hallway where the preschool would be, to try to section that area off. And just ideas how to do that, cost-effective ideas, how to do that. Making sure that the playground is in place as we go near the pickup and drop-off, making pickup and drop-off very user-friendly and fun for kids and safe. So keeping them off the main road and off to the back. Aside from that, I think some of the things that are in place right now are definitely in place, locked in. We know that's exactly what we want to do. We walk through it. I would say that Ernie, Christine, Ruth, myself, Jeff have walked this building, I don't know, a dozen times and changed a little bit as we went and said, oh, maybe this piece would be a little better. And try to put kids first and where we move adults kind of secondary to that. But there are a few moving parts that we're still working with and really more because we're trying to see if we can be more cost-effective.
Jeff, did you have anything you wanted to add?
We're cautiously optimistic, you know, as a new program's coming in. I think working with Kyle and Ernie, we want to make sure that the building is ready to go in, in August. And that's my biggest concern is making sure that we're aesthetically pleasing to our parents as they come in and everything is done before I have kids enter for fall sports. You know, and that's, that's in, in middle of August. So the timeline that we're putting in place, there's going to be some moving parts for our staff come January and hopefully even a little bit sooner than that. We're trying to be as cost-effective as, as possible for our folks, but letting you know that this is going to be a real welcoming place for our preschool kids. I think our staff is, is, again, cautiously optimistic about it. I have some ideas of some programs that I could put my seniors in, into those preschool classrooms in time with some training and actually develop a program of studies that will fit into some of the preschool stuff. So I see this as a real opportunity for our kids. But the, the putting pieces in place is my, my biggest concern because we have a nice vision and it's going to be a matter of dollars and cents to make it look pleasing. Kyle and I were talking about it, we really want parents to buy into it. This is one of the safest buildings in, in the district with the amount of adults here. And what better place than to put three and four-year-olds in this place where I have, you know, over 100 adults here and upperclassmen. When I was in Situate, we had a pre-K in our, in our building and I found that the students, the upper, the students in the, in the high school took care of those kids really well. And we want to engage them here and once they're part of the school in, in our rally and different things like that, so they're actually part of the school culture as well. We actually did a fire drill the other day and we were planning out where they would be, you know, to make sure that they have their own space once we come up. So we're already thinking ahead and I think we're in a good spot. It's just going to be a matter of dollars and cents.
Thank you. So in terms of the preschool, you know, the real feeling is try and get that as set up as possible during the school year, so we're not trying to do many different projects in the summertime. The next piece that we've been looking at, we did a, an in-depth walkthrough at the Indian Head School. There's a lot of cleanup and surplus that needs to be moved out of there. We are starting to now work with Dr. Wilcox in terms of the configuration, where your K 1, 2, 3, and 4 going to go. Ernie believes there will be some need for retrofitting in terms of the bathrooms there that probably needed to be done anyway, so this will certainly enhance the building as well. So that's the Indian Head piece. Concerns about playgrounds, parking, those things we're all working on. The piece at Hanson Middle School, tomorrow night, we're going to be having a meeting with parents from McQuan and Indian Head School to talk about what these transitions mean, so we can answer any questions or get their questions and then try and find answers to them. When you go to Hanson Middle School, it's already been very well thought out. There's an entire wing that will be for the fifth grade. Their enrollment at this time is below 400. So adding another grade level there is not really going to stress the system much at all because the building was built for many more students than that. So that was, when we went there, we were like, oh, this works fine. So it's really getting, I think, Indian Head configured where it needs to be, getting McQuan cleaned out because there's a lot of stuff, it's been open for a lot of years. What we're going to start doing right after the first of the year is we'll be having times, a couple times a month, where Ernie and the folks who work with him will be coming around to the schools and getting anything that is surplus and that's not being used so that they're. surplus and that's not being used, so that there's not this massive cleanup that takes place at the end of June. And we feel if we stagger that over time, when they actually go to pack, they should have gotten rid of the stuff that they don't need. So that's going to be happening as well. So I feel more comfortable that we're starting to get things into place. But, you know, we're working on that. So, big project.
That answers a couple of my questions, Ruth. There's quite a bit of buzz around town about moving up here. And then there's a genuine concern about moving the 5th grade to Hanson Middle. And there's another genuine concern about moving McQuan to Indian Head. And will there be, I know there is tomorrow night, and I want everyone to hear. If you have any questions about McQuan or Indian Head, please attend the meeting tomorrow night. Where is it? What time?
5:30 at the Hanson Middle School auditorium. 5:30 to 6:30 are for the McQuan-Indian Head folks. And then the Indian Head move to Hanson Middle would be 6:30 to 7:30. But people can come for the whole thing, too, as well. And the point is, we're pretty sure that we're being comprehensive in addressing their questions and concerns. But this is ongoing throughout the year. We'll get, you know, as concerns come up, and how we communicate with everyone. And Beth's done a nice job of sending things out as well.
So I'm sure I can ensure these people, and I was doing this anyway, that there will be more meetings, ladies and gentlemen, if you happen to be watching this. As this transition comes forward and becomes more to fruition, we will be keeping you updated, and there will be more meetings. But I encourage you to attend tomorrow night at Hanson Middle School, and maybe stay for both, even though it may not impact your student. It may give you information for your neighbors that might put to rest, put to ease some of the concerns.
And it helps us, because sometimes there are concerns that parents will have that come to us that we may not have thought of. And we want to do this in October, so that those issues and concerns can be addressed. We know this is a big change for the whole system, but I think it's one down the road we're gonna feel pretty good about, so.
Questions, anyone?
And the other piece, too, is just that every school committee meeting, this will be on the agenda. So there will be an opportunity. People come, we have questions, we can answer them. But also, we'll be giving ongoing updates as well.
Fred?
I just want to, we had a more conversation in the facilities. Just to assure parents that when a student is dropped off in the pre-K up here, they're going directly into a, through a locked door, glass door, into a classroom. So, you know, there's no roaming of the halls, there's no going in through the hallway and then going into a classroom. They're going directly into a classroom.
That's right.
With security, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, good.
There is one other thing with the warrant subcommittee minutes. They were also in part of your packet that was left tonight that wasn't mailed to you. So I hope that you could...
They need to vote those minutes?
They need to vote the minutes, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the warrant subcommittee meeting minutes. Second.
Discussion? Can all of us vote for that?
Yeah.
It's something that we have to do.
No, I understand that, but just the warrant committee members vote to accept their meeting, or is the full committee?
Full committee. You don't have to have been there.
Yeah. I know that a lot of people abstain, but if they're not at a meeting, you're basically voting what the document says. You don't have to abstain because you're absent. If you read the document, look at the document, you're voting what the document says. You're not concurring that you were there, you're just agreeing to accept the document.
The second to last page of the documents that were brought out tonight.
Yep, thank you.
I have a motion, the second. Any further discussion? I'll give you a little bit to take a quick peek. More and more, as you know, these documents all need to be voted. It's becoming more and more cumbersome to do, but it's something that's incumbent upon us to do as a school committee. So, having a motion, the second. If there's no further discussion, I'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you, Christine. Okay, old business. Joint budget meeting discussion. We had a fairly lengthy discussion. I think it went right to the hour and a half that we talked about. There was some discussion with different people on the board, not just on the board, but people in the audience, of maybe we're going around in a circle. We didn't have much participation from the district students' parents coming forward at all with this. We had notified through letters, all the representatives of the department heads that we have in this meeting. It was also suggested that maybe we make the committee smaller. So we're moving towards looking at that by discussing it with the town representatives. It's Bob, you had stated.
Yes.
We're kind of contacting them and discussing it, and see if maybe that, general consensus-wise, might work. So it's kind of a work in progress, but I'm just giving you an update of where we are. You may see another meeting in the next month or so. You may not, because contacting everybody, everybody's busy, it's a little bit more cumbersome. But we are working on it. I just want everyone to know that. And again, if and when we have the next meeting, we will broadcast it so everybody is available to come. And as I said, to just tailor into that, we are reviewing and rewriting for the votes of both towns and the boards of selectmen and town meeting, the different articles that have changed for the review of the regional school agreement. So just a reminder, anyone who's watching this evening, that meeting will be coming up. We will announce the next one. It's a very important document. It's something that if you want to have input on, you should come to that meeting and put in your two cents worth, so it can be taken in and kicked around, and see if it's something that we need to do as a regional school committee, because the last time it was really reviewed was in 1991. So, does anyone have any questions about that meeting? Good, Michelle?
Good. Did you want to say when the next meeting is?
Pardon me?
No.
Okay, new business. Election of a municipal representative for negotiations. We sent letters to both towns, and both towns have come to the conclusion that Mike McHugh from Hanson will be their municipal representative. I know that Frank was sent a letter. I have it in front of me, and so was Mike. And both boards, I believe, voted, and they sent back that Mike is gonna be the municipal rep. So he will be the municipal rep that will be coming from both towns and reporting back to the towns of what's going on during negotiations. Anyone have any questions about that? In your packet, there was a gender identity policy. It's there for a first reading. There's no, there's no problem to let it go to another for a second reading and vote, Ted?
We can do it either way. They can waive the second if they're comfortable, or...
If you're comfortable with how it reads, I wouldn't entertain a motion to waive the second. We can get right to passing the document through. But if not, if not, I'm okay with it, too.
I'll make the motion for discussion purposes. So move. Second.
Discussion? Was the motion to waive the second reading, Fred?
Yes.
So I have a motion to waive the second reading, and that includes accepting the document as written? Is that your intent, Fred?
Yes, yes.
And that was your second, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have to appoint a records access officer with the departure of Dr. Dillon. We are required by law to have a records assessment officer. I would think it would want to be either Kyle Riley or Dr. Whitner. I would entertain some sort of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to have Dr. Whitner as the record access officer. Second.
Discussion? Mike, Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did someone before me? Who did it before? Kyle?
No, it was Pat Dillon.
It was Pat Dillon. I mean, I know you're very busy. Would you accept that, or if not?
Well, we have to have somebody do it. I mean, I mean, both Kyle and I are very busy. But it's always done. I mean, we get it done. I mean, you have to. So, doesn't matter.
So you're okay with it?
Sure.
Any further discussion?
I'll just designate it to Kyle. It's easy.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Actually, we'll work together. We'll work, we work well together.
Okay. If you look, we have a school council revised job description. What was revised, Ruth?
Well, what has happened over the past couple of years is the National Counseling Association has dropped the name Guidance from Guidance Council. So across the nation, and now it's finally come to Massachusetts, the word Guidance has been dropped, and it's School Counselor. Then Ruth Kerrigan went through and updated it to really reflect current practices. We had a job description that I think went back to the 1990s. So she felt that was an appropriate thing to do, and really tried to define in there exactly what our school counselors do. But one of it was really a language change, and then really looking at just what it is that our counselors do.
And entertain a motion to accept as revised?
Second.
Could I have a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, I see.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boyce. Any further discussion? As I said earlier, things are changing. We went from Guidance Councils to School Councils.
Yep.
Changes in the language. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous, thank you. Training in the administration of Narcan. Ruth, or I can probably go right to this.
And Jeff can help with it.
And Jeff? Jeff, come on. You're here. We might as well put you to work.
So we've met as a, as a security team. Since Dr. Dillon has left, we've reconstructed who, how we discuss security in the district. And the team itself includes the superintendent, Mr. Farrell, Ms. McKillop, and Ernie Sandlin as a unit within the district. We invited the police chiefs and the fire chiefs to come in and discuss our safety and security plans, along with Roseman, a couple weeks ago. And the issue of Narcan came up in our discussion. As you know, a few years back, I came to you on behalf of Chief Thompson, asking for our school nurse and our athletic trainer to be certified to administer Narcan. That was a few years back. Since then, our school nurses left. Our new school nurse has not been certified. But Lexi, our trainer, carries Narcan on her person when she's at events on campus and off campus. Chief Grano made the suggestion that we look at our policy and our practice as far as Narcan goes. And at first, we kind of looked at him quizzically about why would we want to have Narcan in our schools? Is that a bad precedent to set? And Chief Mix actually brought up the point, which made us really think, is that fentanyl and carfentanil are products that are around the area quite a bit. And carfentanil is something that can attach itself to someone's clothing. And I'm benedict to a person rub up against that individual who has carfentanil on them and have a reaction, an opiate overdose reaction to that. And they could die. So on his suggestion, he thought that we might want to have staff and administrators trained in Narcan, which is a very, as Chief Thompson said, very simply, if you can put phlonase in your nose, you can do Narcan. So we suggested that we come to the school committee and have this discussion as far as some of our staff, and actually keeping Narcan in our AED device areas, especially in the high school, a vial of Narcan or two, that if we ever had an incident at an event here, or in a classroom, where somebody rubs up against someone else who has that carfentanil on them, we could potentially save a life. As a person here who searches cars for narcotics sometimes during a search, we use gloves. But thinking about that, that I could come in contact with a potential deadly chemical doing my job, made me think a little bit about how we do our practice. And then when Mike had said, look, you know, officers can have it on their vest for a couple days and not know about it, and that's why each officer now carries their own personal Narcan, just for those instances. Not to be distributed to the public for their own person, in case a colleague goes down or themselves might need that. But the fact of putting it in our schools isn't saying that we're, we have an opioid crisis within our schools. I think this is a very proactive approach to a situation that's becoming very out of control within our area, and we're being safe, rather than me calling 911, saying I have a student down, and I don't know why. Now, the effects of Narcan will have no, no medical, it won't hurt a person. It's almost like an adrenaline shot from an EpiPen. If you give somebody an EpiPen, you're not gonna hurt them. They're gonna have to seek medical attention afterwards, because there's a physical reaction to that. But according to the chiefs, having somebody, if somebody goes down and they give a shot on Narcan, they're not going to have an ill effect to that. Now, I'm not, I'm not a professional. I don't know that medically as well. But I trust Chief Grano and Chief Thompson, and Chief Benton and Chief Mix, when they make that suggestion that we should have this discussion as far as the school system, because of the carfentanil and the fentanyl that's out, especially in our areas. And, you know, even simply put, you know, if somebody comes in and makes a dollar exchange, hands-on with, on money, and they've been involved in substances, we could have a problem within our district. And we haven't had one yet, and I hope that we never do. But we've been on the cutting edge of security and safety, and making sure our kids are, we're proactive in keeping everyone safe. And this is just another added tool that we could possibly add to our toolkit.
Dan?
Two things, Jeff. Yes. I recently just went to a police canine demonstration and talking to the officers, you know, because they had both the dog dual handle, crowd control, takedown perps, and they had the drug dog. They no longer, in that town, will do field testing for drugs because of fentanyl. Because, like he says, it's just everywhere. It just can be anywhere. So, you know, they have to be careful with the dogs, because now the dogs go in there, they touch it on a seat that somebody had it. They're not even finding that. They're going for another drug. That's one of the things. So, you know, they all carry, like he says, they all carry their own Narcan now. That's, it really isn't Whitman-Hanson issue. It's a community issue. It's everywhere. Like I said, if somebody has it on a dollar bill, somebody can get that, because I might not touch it, and the next person touches it, could touch that spot. So, yeah, I mean, the second thing, if it's being kept in the AEDs, is that alarmed?
That's a good question.
Because I wouldn't want to be keeping those things in there from people stealing out there, because it's expensive.
Absolutely. One of the cost issues is that Chief Grano said that we work something out, that it would be more supplied. Like, our AEDs are supplied here from, I keep them up battery-wise, but Chief Thompson makes sure that we at the high school, or in Hanson, have AEDs. It's a good question about the AEDs, because I've never opened one myself. So I don't know if it's alarmed or not.
If you open that box, an alarm's going off. Use the alarm whenever you want.
Certain things that we could put in place if we do have that. And that was one of the factors that you come into play, is that, is it just gonna disappear, you know, potentially? So that's something that we'd have to look at to make sure it's in a safe, secure place. Maybe it's not in an AED, maybe it's in different areas. But people have access to that. It's just a thought-provoking question that I don't think I, five years ago, I would have never come to the school committee and said, hey, look, we should have an anti-opiate, you know, substance to bring back somebody from being dead. It's just not something I've thought of. But when Mike had said that about the vest, I was sitting next to him, and I actually thought about that, and coming in contact with that. Any one of us could do that at any point during the course of the day. And we have a lot of public in and out of here. We have people at, we have 2,000 people at a football game. We have, you know, people in the gymnasium. We have people that come in from different, from different towns. And people have substance problems, and they're not knowing where they're getting it. So it's just another tool that we're looking at, potentially saving that life. If we have it here, and someone goes down, the thing for me is that there's no negative effect to that. We won't, they'd be sent to the hospital. It'd be a 911 call. They're on their way. But the fact that a cruiser might not get here, or the rig might not get here, or a fire engine's not gonna get here in time, is just something to think about.
And nowadays, they could be off on another call for that same thing, so.
Well, Jeff, it's funny that I had, I had the opportunity, I just saw the Boston Police Officer, a truck. So I asked him about it. He goes, yeah, it's right here. It's in a thing called Narcan case. They have these little cases that goes right on their belt. And I asked him all those questions. I said, what happens if it's administered to someone that the opioid, you know, it... I said, what happens if it's administered to someone that, the opioid, you know, it, it gets misadmitted? There's nothing, there's no, it's not dangerous. What it does is it separates the opioid from the hyd, was kind of how he described it to me, for a person that's overdosing on the drug. And then, he said, you can actually Narcan somebody, and 40 minutes later, they could go right back on an overdose situation, because it's worn off, and there's so much, the drug is so strong in their system that it happens again, without them doing anything else. So, it was a pretty interesting conversation I had with him that it came up, because you and I discussed this, and I, my first thing was, no.
Right.
And then, what did I say the next day? When do we do it?
Right.
Ellie?
I have a couple of questions. And I, I know where you're coming from, because I work in a bank, and I heard about this like a year ago, and it scared the daylights out of me. But from a budgetary standpoint, Narcan is very expensive. Who would be picking up the tab to have it in the schools? Would the district be paying for it?
I think that's something that we were discussing, and, and the, the first responders were very proactive in trying to figure that, you know, to be supportive of that. I, no, we hadn't talked dollars and cents, it was more or less, let's, let's have the conversation with the committee first, to see where you're at, before there was more investigation on the, on the, on the cost. And then, who has it? You know, one of the things that we discussed too is, you know, not necessarily keeping it, but training everybody in it, because if somebody wants to have it on their person, could they, could they potentially, you know, administer that? So, the cost, it was, it was Tim Gernow who was mentioning costs, and, and I don't have my notes with me about what he was saying, but he was kind of very affirmative that Whitman and Whitman Fire would be willing to help out in, in cost there.
Does it have a shelf life? Does it expire? Would we have to replace it after a certain?
Those are the things that I would bring to you if I, I knew more about the, the drug itself. I don't know.
Do you, would you get, I, I understand that you would get training on how to administer it, but would you get training on how to recognize when it's needed? Or is it just kind of a, like a guess to see if that's what it is?
So, when they discussed the, the training, it was just really on the administration of that? You know, if you see somebody go down for, I, I don't know what an overdose looks like. I mean, that might be the initial, if, you know, person's eyes are rolling back, if they're, whatever that reaction is, this is how you respond to it. It's not a, a clutch of the chest, but if you just fi, walk up to a person that's out cold, you know, maybe it's a, it's an automatic Narcan, you know, I feel that. That's something that we would look into. Again, coming to, to the committee first, just to say, look, is this something that, that you'd be interested in finding out more? And I'm sure either chief would love to come and speak to you from their point of professionalism, and give their opinion on that. I know what their opinion of, of carrying it, but answering those questions specifically.
Thank you.
Chris?
So, I know this might be more of a contractual issue with the transportation companies, but have we thought about, or has there been any discussions about the buses, and, and how that would potentially work? I mean, if it's something that we're concerned about within the schools, I'd...
I think that, is, schools, we have an extensions all over the place, so once we start it here, it just trickles out, you know? Could something happen on a bus?
Right.
My athletes are out, and they, they touch something down, and, you know, down in Taunton, and they come back and they have a reaction on the bus. Absolutely, I think it's, it's a trickle-down. Once we set it up here, we set up a protocol, and then we just make sure the players out there, anybody that has student contact has an idea of, of, of these things. Coaches, and, I mean, I send my trainer out, so they're out there, but coaches include those things and, and on the buses, and then we look at our, our transportations to and from school. How much do we want our drivers to know or, or, or carry?
And when we look at that, I think that what prompted that is a recent conversation about epinephrine, and I'm not sure that's on the buses. So, again, there might be a combo of if we're going to go that route, look at kind of all those things at once, and maybe have that as a contractual.
Bob?
It sounds like it's pretty much a necessity, the way things are going. And I was just curious as to, when you talk about training, how many people would be involved in training, and would it be voluntary training, or would it be everyone have to do the training? In other words, at the school this size, about how many people do you think would need to be trained? Would it move down to the elementary as well, or?
I think, again, that's working out that protocol. You, I think establishing a core first, and then spider-weaving it out to see who else. I don't, out of my 100 folks in the building, I don't think everybody needs to be Narcan-trained, but then on the flip side, that one time that the person doesn't, they know where it is, and it, it, it's almost like an AED right now. You know, I've gone through AED training, CPR training, but now there's a step-by-step guide when you pull the machine out, and tells you exactly what to do, you know?
Right, but I, I guess my concern would be, would it be, I know this is early in the stage, would it be a mandatory, or would it be voluntary?
So, all my, my teachers go through mandatory EpiPen training. That being said, there's not EpiPens in everybody's, you know, bag. So, if we put, through a faculty meeting, I did Narcan training, Chief Thompson did the training for everybody, everybody would be trained, so to speak, and having been seen that. That would be something I think we would work out with the association contractually and, and district-wide, you know?
Well, I was going to suggest, I think it would be a very good thing. Obviously, there are some questions still lingering. If you could do the due diligence, and would you be seeking a motion for a consensus?
I'd entertain a motion for consensus to let the Superintendent and, and, and the principal move forward and come back to the committee with the answered questions. And maybe it would be prudent to bring in Chief Gernow and Chief Thompson.
They're happy to come.
Absolutely.
And they, they're willing to come tonight too, but they'll, they'll follow up.
And will, the committee will hear more? Wait a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just, just one quick thing.
Go ahead.
Another funding, we could always head up like Plymouth County Sheriff, the DA, because they always have programs.
Yeah, and they didn't seem to think the funding was an obstacle. That's what Jeff and I got that.
That seems to be the thing now, you just have to find out where that.
Right, they were very supportive, yeah.
So, so we can prompt all four chiefs to come. Mike and Scott can give the, the police perspective, and, and Tim and, and Jerry can give the fire, the reaction, the, the rescue perspective, and I'll prompt them with the questions that you have, and they, they can be prepared for that.
Perfect.
Any further discussion? All those in favor and moving forward? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I have one page to declare a surplus. Dear Dr. Gilbert Whitner, the number of classrooms at Aquana's decreased since the purchase of the Scott Forsman Reading Program. While at the time of purchase, there were eight classrooms at each grade level, there are currently only five classrooms at each grade level. Due to decrease in enrollment, we currently have the following surplus in Scott Forsman Grade One Materials, Unit 1, 30 of them, Unit 2, 52, Unit 3, 50, Unit 4, 49, Unit 5, 46, and Unit 6, 54. A representative from Fall reviewed said materials in December of 2016, and the items listed are not of any monetary value. I respectfully request the list of items to become surplus material. Sincerely, Beth Wilcox. An entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Fred?
I did have a question. Is the curriculum currently being used?
Not to any great extent. This was purchased in 2007, and the readings, ELA standards have changed twice since then.
Anyone else? Having a motion in a second, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. There's no one bearing any gifts tonight, but there are several field trips, about a dozen of them. And we talked about blanket doing them, and I can't do it that way, so I will go as quickly as possible. First one's boys' basketball, on December 26th to January 1st, 2018. They're going to leave the school at 7:00 AM, come back at 9:00 AM. They're departing from their destination, they're going to South Florida. This is an annual trip. They're actually going to Miami and Key West, there's 13 students and two adults. They will be not needing a school nurse for the strip, because all the locations that they go to have adequate facilities and people to, to take care of any problems that may come about. An entertain a motion?
So moved.
How are they getting there?
Second.
I believe that trip, they fly.
Yes, I do.
I know in previous years, they took them all to home, I think, at one particular point.
No, the, actually, the flights were in the warrant?
Yeah.
Okay.
I entertain a motion to accept, I have that. Any other discussion?
Cost to the district? There's no cost to the district?
No cost to the district.
No, this is, no cost to the district.
I figured it was important to say that.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Girls' basketball, will be leaving on December 27th and coming back on December 31st. They're going to Fort Myers to play basketball. They have three chaperones going. They do not need a school nurse, the same that went on with the boys. Adequate protection is available. An entertain a motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Fred?
The second person who's a chaperone, is that, I just don't recognize the name.
Yeah, he's, he's a teacher here, and he's a cook.
He's a wellness teacher at the, at Whitman Middle School.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next one, cheerleading will be leaving January 26th, 2018, coming back the 29th. They're going to Dallas, Texas for Nationals. This is another one that is a yearly one that we do. 13, 13 cheerleaders or students going. One chaperone listed, and there's a bunch more to be determined. Usually, there's a whole bunch of parents that go, they are flying, and they are asking for a waiver of a school nurse. An entertain a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next one, AP Language. They're leaving November 29th, 2017. They're going to arrive, they, they, I think they're taking a bus, actually.
Yeah, this is just a day trip, but it's a crime.
It's a day trip.
But it's to Rhode Island.
It's going to Rhode Island, it's for Chris McCarroll production at Trinity Repertory Theater. 150 students are going, several chaperones, and they are asking for a, a waiver of the nurse. An entertain a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Next one's Whitman Hansen Global Awareness Program. They're going to be leaving on the 15th of February, 2018. They're going to be, coming back February 24th, 2018. They're going to Costa Rica for student travel and tour of educational sites, there's approximately 60 students going. There are a host of chaperones, and all the, all, most of those names are teachers, I think, if not all. They're going to be flying. They are taking the nurse with them. An entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next one is Model UN. They're going to Brown University, and this is another one that's over the border. 12 students, three chaperones. They're going in a bus. They will not be needing a school nurse. An entertain a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Just like to reiterate, they didn't fill out, but there's no cost to the district?
No.
Nope. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next one, this is an annual one, it's a DECA one, they're going to the Quincy Marriott overnight. They're leaving on January 4th, coming back January 5th. There's five chaperones or more going. They're requesting a nurse waiver, because there is one there, and they're taking a bus. An entertain a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. There's another DECA trip, they're leaving on the 31st of January, 2018. They're coming back on the 4th of February, 2018. They go into Florida to a DECA Sports and Entertainment Marketing Conference. There's approximately 20 of them going. There's two chaperones currently, they're asking for a nurse waiver, because there is current coverage there. An entertain a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. The next one is also a DECA event, it'll be on March 8th, 2018, to March 10th, 2018. They're going to the Marriott Copley in Boston for a state conference for DECA, approximately 20 students. Currently, two chaperones, they will be asking for a nurse waiver. An entertain a motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next one is investing business classes, from what I can see. They're going from December 21st, and they're coming back December 21st. They're going to New York, to the Financial District in Madison Square Garden, to expose students to New York City. It's approximately 30 to 40 students. There are two current chaperones listed, and a few more to be determined. They are asking for, they are asking for a nurse waiver, as they have coverage in New York. An entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
993 tour bus.
I'm sorry?
Taking a tour bus back.
Yes, they're taking a bus. In Manhattan alone, there are more than 24 medical facilities, which can easily be accessed if we have a medical emergency, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Whitman Hansen Ski Club. They're going on a day trip to Akemo Mountain in Ludlow, Vermont, 40 to 50 students. I believe this is another current thing that happens year-to-date. Right now, there are two chaperones, and a few more to be determined. They're asking for a nurse waiver, because Akemo Mountain provides additional coverage for any problems that may arise. An entertain a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And another one, the Whitman Hansen Ski Snowboard Club is leaving on the 27th and coming back on the 27th. They go on to Ludlow, Vermont, Akemo Mountain, pretty popular place, well, 40 students. A few chaperones listed, a couple to be determined. They're asking for a nurse waiver, because coverage is put on by Akemo Mountain, supplied. An entertain a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? And I have another one. Pardon me?
I had a question about that last.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is it the same one as before? Because it's the ski club.
Ski club and a snowboard.
No, snowboarding club.
Yeah. One's a ski club and one's a ski club, snowboard, they go on the same day.
They go together. It's one's middle school and one's the high school, but they go together. That's why they did it as two separate ones.
It's just different, too.
And last but not least, this is an eighth-grade club from Hansen Middle School. They go on the Stadium Theater in Moon Sock at Rhode Island for a Christmas Club play. There's approximately 135 students. There's about 11 chaperones listed, maybe a few more going, and they are going to be needing a school nurse for this trip. I want to entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. As you can see, a lot of good things happen here at Whitman Hansen. There's clubs, and there's, and all kinds of different things, and basketball teams, and they, they stay pretty active, it's a good thing. It gives a little bit better cultural experience to students to get out of Whitman and Hansen, so. Kudos to the people who organize these trips, because it's a ton of work. Kudos to the people who organize these trips because it's a ton of work. Okay, next up, Subcommittee Reports. Policy Subcommittee?
We met a couple of weeks ago, I think. We went through a number of policies, comparing ours to what it suggested. We made some minor changes, some, some are pretty much intact. And we meet again November 5th, I think it is, something like that, November?
Can't be that, but it's.
No, but it's in November somewhere, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'll come back with more.
Soon.
Excuse me. Any questions for Bob? Thank you. Facilities and Capital Improvement Subcommittee?
We met early this evening. Ernie gave a report as to the ongoing projects. Whitman Middle School, the two rooftop units, the Board of Selectmen this week have given their blessing for us to move forward to replace those two.
Fred?
Go ahead.
If I could just jump in there, I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Was brought to me, brought up to me by a member, actually. Why are we, why are they just replacing two? I'm, I don't get that. Like, if they have to get a crane up there to replace two and there's five up there that should be replaced, is, was there any discussion about that? And maybe I'm all wet with my, with my, Mike, can you?
The response the last month was that they didn't think, they thought, was told Whitman Finance adjusted just doing two at a time.
Okay, all right.
And these two are currently down. Yeah, this is a repair. This is a repair.
Okay. All right. I just, that question was brought up to me and.
The rest of them are currently on the matrix, but as Mike alluded to, they're going to do two at a time.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, Fred.
And I wasn't at the meeting last month, so.
That's okay, I had to ask.
Unaware of that discussion. Hanson Middle, they've got the HVAC recommissioning study complete, they've added that to the capital matrix. Conley's proceeding with the outdoor classroom project with the help from our friends over at SocioVotech. McQuan, the tubes were replaced for the heater and that boiler is up and running and Narcan Wood will continue to be running properly, going through some of the closing issues and getting prepared for that. Indian Head, Ruth alluded to the fact that there would be some retrofitting that would need to be done. And pretty much that's about it.
Any questions?
Anyone else has anything to add?
Any questions for Fred? Thanks, Fred.
Okay, take a minute, that meeting is at the 15th, not the 5th, the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay. Legislative update, Mike?
Nothing major at this point, a lot next month to be.
Okay. Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
We had our first meeting the same night you had the, or we had the budget with the towns and so forth, budget planning meeting here. So, our first meeting, we started off with the trustees. We're going to meet with them once a year now, we, it was a biannual thing. So, we had their meeting prior to that. We went through a lot of the actions that we normally would go through. We got the auditor's report and the independent auditor's report portion, as well as the whole report would, will be available. We're going to get it from the Executive Director, Maureen Goggan. And we assigned committees. Yours truly is back on the Budget Subcommittee. We will have a meeting October 30th at 5:00. And we do have our next meeting coming up November 2nd for the Pilgrim Area Collaborative that is also right in the middle of Mass and Mask Conference. The Chairman, who is, represents both Plimpton and Silver Lake, he will probably make a decision on what we're going to do with the meeting, whether we leave the conference for a little while, come back up to Pembroke and then head back down or what, whatever the situation. But right now, it's set for November 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Anyone have any questions? Thanks, team. Negotiations Subcommittee. The ground rules were, were basically a photocopy of last year's ground rules to discuss how we're going to move forward. I think that took approximately 10 or 15 minutes maximum just to read over. The same ones, obviously, I have received a letter informing us that they are ready to negotiate with us. I'm telling you that now. And we're going to be setting dates and as soon as the dates are set, we will come back to you. They have to meet and we're going to meet previous to them, so we're better, we're, we're ready, better than we were last year and move forward with that meeting. So, we'll keep you apprised of the dates. Anyone have any questions for me?